Commissioner McKenzie, thanks for joining us this afternoon. I'm Steve Bosskey, the opinion editor. We appreciate you being here. My deputy opinion editor Dan Sweeney is on this call along with Lisa Hurry Ash, who reports extensively on Broward County government. Commissioner, why don't you give us sort of a brief, but cover as much waterfront as you can, an opening statement as to why you think you'd be an asset to the Broward County Commission?
First of all, I'm Robert McKenzie. I'm a native of Fort Lauderdale, born and raised here. Again, all of my 60 years right here in Fort Lauderdale. The other way, I went off to college and came back here to Fort Lauderdale. And it was sometime back in 2004, I decided that I wanted to run for county commission. I ran against John Rostam, three times to be exact, unsuccessfully, but very close. That was my first taste with politics in terms of me being involved. And had planned to come back and do it again. And then prior to that, Bobby DeBose approached me to take his place as he would resign early and go on to the state house and do things there. I wasn't very comfortable with that because I had been out there before by myself on an island. And I decided if the electeds and the community were going to support me, I would do this. So I did it. Chris Smith, Bobby DeBose, they supported me and I ran for the seat. And now we're talking eight and a half years later, I've been serving the citizens of Broward County. I think I've been doing a very good job and I want to continue my efforts on the other side. The county piece so that I could do some things that I wanted to do when I first started out running for county commission, which is like represent the five unincorporated neighborhoods. One of them won't be in this district. It was cut out. It's on the west side as far our view, but you're talking about Franklin Park, Washington Park, Roosevelt Gardens and Boulevard Gardens, who I think should have been incorporated by now and they have been underrepresented by the county. And just want to bring some more excitement to this district. Some of the things that I learned at the city of Fort Lauderdale, and I think I have a vast array of of experience from infrastructure, building relationships with the police department, dealing with the parks, bonds and all the things that Fort Lauderdale faced in the last eight and a half years I've been here, kind of hit us right in the face, but we took a good look at it and we dealt with it from a commission perspective, looked at the community. We listened to what they wanted and you just got to make tough decisions and do this. So I want to represent the voters in Broward County, represent Broward County. As I leave Fort Lauderdale to be a voice for change, be a voice for fighting for the citizens and the residents of Fort Lauderdale, Pompano Beach, North Lauderdale, Oakland Park are the districts that I represent, but I'll be a representation of Broward County as a whole.
Right, okay, very good. Tell me something, in your experience, you've lived in Broward County for a very long time. How extensive in county government is, in your opinion, is the sense of neglect of communities of color in Broward?
Communities of color, meaning?
I'm talking about, well, you mentioned those unincorporated areas that are underrepresented. I'm thinking of areas like that.
Well, I think they're very, very underrepresented in terms of services, people hearing their voices. I think back when we had a guy by the name of Josephus Egleshan. I think he paid very close attention to those areas since he was born and raised in Roosevelt Garden. I mean, he knew the needs of the community. And he fought for them. I think after that, we kind of lost touch with what was the real sense of community. What did those people want? Even John Rostam did a good job with Seven over there with with Washington Park, some of the infrastructure he put in there and he worked with Eugene Washington, the HOA president. They paid attention to the folks that were on the grounds and heard the voices and tried to cater to some of their needs. I mean, typically, when you look at these areas as somewhat like what I represented in Fort Lauderdale, where you get the least amount of the economics in terms of the big pie or the big picture. And if you don't have a voice or someone fighting for you, you would never be heard. And I think this is what those four pockets need. And then you also have other areas that were similar, like what we call the St. George Community or Parkway. They had the same issue. They've now been incorporated with Lotte Hill and this goes on and on and on with some of those contiguous neighborhoods. They've been underrepresented. And I think now is an opportunity for us to capitalize on that and just push their voices, their needs, their wants and their concerns forward.
Okay. I do want to briefly touch on a couple of important votes you've made as a Fort Lauderdale city commissioner. It's been it's been awfully busy and active at Fort Lauderdale City Hall for a while here. You, I believe Commissioner, you were one of the ones in the majority. You voted earlier this year to terminate the city auditor, John Herbst. Why was John Herbst fired?
I don't, um. I didn't support John Herbst being fired. That was the others on that day. It was Heather Maritas and myself that really tried to save John. The others had an issue with him. I think it became personal, the issue. Here's a guy that prior to that meeting, no one had any concerns about, but once the the investigation into what happened over in Rear Vista with the infrastructure, when he did the audit there, I think that's when the wheels start coming up of the wagon, if you will. And then again with the Hymar, he had some issues with not answering questions for Commissioner Glassman then. And they just, they just took off. And early on, the mayor, Dean Trantallas, had already silenced him because he leaked meeting, leaked some information out of one of his meetings. So that deal was already cut. It was just a matter of when he would upset the others. I didn't have a problem with John Herbst. I still don't have a problem with him. I do have a problem with who we replace him with. But I probably won't be the majority in that decision. But I hope they make the right decision moving forward to replace the city auditor.
Okay, I want to set the record straight from my point. I misspoke. You're quite right. You cast the only no vote against firing John Herbst. Heather Maritas had left the meeting, so the vote was three to one.
Right.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
We get things wrong all the time. It's no big deal.
I want to ask you, this hasn't come up for a vote yet, but do you support a bridge or a tunnel over the new river to manage boat traffic and Bright Line trains?
Oh, here's the deal, and you know from the beginning, I was on the MPO when we first came up with a bridge. This tunnel idea came out of left field. And the developers downtown and the marine industry all wanted this bridge initially. And then when the tunnel came on the table, it started changing the way some folks were thinking. Then the marine industry started lobbying for the tunnel. Other developers downtown started making phone calls saying this is what they wanted. I just like to see what's going to be best for us and what's going to be best for us economically. But the key, and I said it in many meetings, which was we are at the behest of Broward County. I mean, they're going to make the final analysis on this and where we go. I know we tried to steer the train in another direction. Our mayor did, but I don't think it was with the consensus. I think it was just what he wanted. I could, I could go either way. But we're going to have issues either way that we try to drive this issue because if you go underground, you got to get property rights from folks to go underground. You'll take up more of a ramping type system to accommodate those passengers trains, whereas the bridge, you won't need that much rampage to do it depending on which bridge you choose. And you're going to have property right issues there. So it's just going to be a struggle. One of those things that do a lot of community outreach to really find out what fits best and A, can we afford this?
Okay, I'm going to open the floor now. My colleagues, Dan Sweeney and Lisa Hurry Ash.
Real quick, the, just as a point of clarification, are you supportive of John Herbst candidacy?
I don't endorse anyone when I'm running for office. I like John. I think he'll be a great fit on the days. I think he has to bring the wealth of experience, knowledge and particularly in the finance arena. When you look at who is on there now and their backgrounds, you don't see the finance PCC education. You see other things. So I do think we need someone with that type of background. I'm not saying it has to be John Herbst. I think King Keats is a personal friend of mine as well. So I know Christopher Williams and I just hope we get the best person for that seat. And that won't be determined by me. That will be determined by the voters in that district, uptown, Core Ridge and what have you. And I think a lot is going to have to deal with the development at the mall, the Galleria. I think that's the whole thing that's really, really turning this or driving this particular seat at this point.
What do you think of that, the proposed development of the Galleria?
We've been working with the Galleria folks since I came on board. We've had a couple of different plans. I've supported most of them, but I always try to side with the district commissioner on what is going on because they spend the most time with those folks. I think the Galleria Mall, just like all other malls that are built from that template, are obsolete now. You got to come up with creative ideas of how you can get people to these places. The probably the most exciting part of that mall are the restaurants. And what happens there, you know, for the nightlife. I mean, people are coming out for that. When you walk into that mall, there aren't that many people walking around shopping. I mean, I still think it's probably one of our better malls for Fort Lauderdale, whether to have a way out to Sawgrass Meals, but look at Sawgrass Meals. We thought that was going to be a flop, right? And it is a big success. They're growing. They're now putting housing units out there. So sometimes you got to think outside of the box and do things a little differently. I think the elephant in the room are the units. The units, how high, how many and how is it going to impact my backyard? But we've done a good job with the development we've done here thus far in Fort Lauderdale. It's just how we how we process this project so that we can get the mall or some high-end stores back there. We can get the housing units that are necessary in that area and needed. And how we not impact those neighbors negatively in doing so. But something has to be done at that mall. I don't own the mall, but the mall is in the city and I have to participate in the process.
Should you be elected to the county commission, you know, so many issues take just, you know, the big issues take just years and years to resolve. What do you think are the big two or three issues that you think are going to be ones that define the county commission while you're on it?
I think immediately coming out of the box, you're going to be dealing with transportation. Which you think or would have thought we had it fixed, but the commission I serve on now, they killed the light rail, which would have been a piece of building a real transportation or public transportation system. Where you keep adding to it and moving towards it. We've been spending times programming lights, adding buses to the routes and no one's really looking at the bus riders or the people who are taking public transportation. The four of us, we're not getting on a bus unless we're going to take Bright Line down to the Miami arena. We're just, we're just not conditioned for that. I have two or three cars in my driveway. We got to change the mindset of the people, but first we got to build a system that works for the people, the service industry people who are taking the Bright, not Bright Line, but the Tri-Rail. They're on the BCT bus routes. Those are the people we need to be trying to figure out, how do we get them from point A to point B? But we often do it for what we want. I mean, even this tunnel to nowhere that I didn't support, by the way, on La Solas. Who is that for? The hotel service industry? It's not. You're talking about riding in Teslas. I mean, who's going to take a beach chair, you know, from La Solas Park and walk across the street where they can just drive their car all the way to the beach and the point of destination, put it in a little cart or something and pull it to the beach? So I think we are not thinking about public transportation the way that it should be thought of. I think Miami did a good job by starting with the first piece of rail way back when, now they're on two and three. And even Bright Line has come in and complimented that piece. Now we can go down to the game and walk three blocks to the arena, get back on the train, come back home. And we're right here. We can walk back to our units if you live as close as I do. But that's a luxury train. But we need to look at Tri-Rail. We need to look at the BCT system. We need to look at because all we're doing is building more lanes to accommodate more cars, cars right now. I mean, I-95 is doing a good job with how we get traffic on and off with that I-95 express lanes. But again, you're talking about accommodating more vehicles, but what about public transportation? I think it's going to be a big issue. The other thing I think is going to be the 911 call center, which I have mixed views on. Because we had a call center ourselves prior to me getting there and it's my understanding from my police department that it worked very well, but they were trying to play on this team when they did this. And we went over to the BSO system with the county system. Our system, we lost our system then, but for us to come back online with a system now would just be so costly. But they are thinking about doing that. We're looking at the price tag now, but the county has a big lift in that. A, you want to pay more, you want to hire folks, but no one's talking about what type of issues this is going to create for the unions. They're going to be bargaining too as to A, can they participate? B, why can't we get it? Probably more so from the corrections piece of it than the law enforcement. But there are a lot of things that probably won't allow this to happen overnight. But we have an issue with that. I mean, even now when you call, you can't, you don't get the right addresses because most people are using cell phones. So you don't know if you're at Carter Park, Snyder Park or Treetop Park. So there's some real issues with that system, but I think if we look at it closely, we get the right people looking at it. I think we can, we can resolve it, but it's something we can't ignore right now. And our infrastructure, I think what Fort Lauderdale has experienced with sewer and water, you're going to see around the county, some of the older cities. And it's going to have to be looked at, whether it's a county road, state road, or you know, depending on who owned the road and who owns the infrastructure. That's the, those are the ones that are doing the investments in it. So we have to look at that. And when you start looking at these highway projects and these bridges, all those are federal projects, most of them. And that comes from a different pot of money. So we were fortunate enough to pass a bond to deal with our infrastructure and we didn't deal with it fast enough and it just, it blew up in our faces. But day one of me stepping on the commission, when we started experiencing sewer blowouts and stuff, but it was on the east side. I had an opportunity to start sewer lining in my district if I was willing to close down Sis Trunk Boulevard. And I closed it. I closed it. We got our infrastructure done on the first leg. It was, it was a very big inconvenience. But look at what it did long-term. We didn't wait. We didn't get the sewage like they did over in the Rear Vista area. And they couldn't, they couldn't turn it off. When you really think about it, and we really had to deal with it at that particular time. And the commission I was on prior to that, we'd already approved the bond money to do that. We just kept dragging and kicking the can as to when we would do it. Because people didn't want to be inconvenienced in their neighborhoods. It forced our hands. So now we got to continue that role. We So I think those are three, three big things. And I'll use the 911 call system as public safety. I'll use infrastructure and I'll use public transportation. They're going to be huge issues to tackle and I look forward to tackling those. And no one's talking about the big thing right now, which is affordable housing.
Commissioner, you mentioned a minute ago, the tunnel to nowhere on La Solas, but you voted for it, right?
No, I voted against it.
You did, okay.
I'm the only one.
Very good, all right.
Very consistent on how I vote.
Yes, sir. You have been a supporter, am I correct, of a number of the, you know, capital improvement projects in the community, the one-stop development next to city hall?
Yes.
Seerstown, the redevelopment of Seerstown.
That's, well, that was, that's a private project. Yes, I did support it. It's a private development.
Would you say that generally speaking, I mean, we're well aware that, we know that, you know, you're a licensed general contractor and you're president of a construction company. What is your general view, your philosophy about, about development, about adding more, you know, commercial development projects, especially in the urban core of the county?
Well, I think it's appropriate in the urban core. If you're talking about the downtown, the Flag of Village or uptown Fort Lauderdale, where the development is needed and was planned for way before I came along, we're just now getting to the tipping point of it crossing over into the northwest section. Flag of Village is almost complete, but look at what we did there just by doing something different. And Seerstown is set, blighted as long as I can remember. I think last time I went to there and purchased something was when I was at St. Anthony's Grade School. But that, that block is going to be the entryway to the Mash District and to Flag of Village. And there's just so many exciting things going on over there that will benefit us in the future. So if you build it and it's smart development, they will come. I know some people don't want anything built. We want it to stay the same, but it's not about me. It's about the future. It's about how we grow and protect this beautiful county.
Okay, Lisa, the floor is yours if you want to ask some questions.
I was going to ask about 911. Also Commissioner, can you address flooding issues that Broward County has raised in the past? They've talked about the concern that the canals won't be able to sustain more and that they need to do some type of infrastructure changes to accommodate future storms. So we're not swimming. Have you looked into?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's it?
Oh, I think we have to look at it from a regional approach. I mean, we looked at it here in Fort Lauderdale. Think about what we did. We had one. Some people talking about king tides and some people talking about raising the seawalls. We had some people talking about raising roads, but we didn't have a collective effort from the county on what we should do about this flooding. But it wasn't until probably what, almost a year, eight months ago, we had that real heavy rain in all the neighborhoods flooded. All of the canals backed up and we had a real issue, especially for me in Merrose Manor's where they had no stormwater drains. Merrose Park, I had been complaining about for six years about not cleaning out the retention wells that we had over there and the lack of maintenance. And we got to remember, we inherited Merrose Park from the county. So it didn't have the right or the proper drainage. And when all hell broke loose, we were forced to look at that. So I think we got to look at it from a regional, regional perspective and really go in and figure out how we're going to divert water, control it and look at how we bring online new projects. Like if you start looking at places like La Solas, Core Ridge and other places where you're getting these big McMansions being built, we have this new elevation plane and I've complained about it for day one because I'm a contractor. If it's an improved neighborhood and you build your house the same height as your neighbor's existing home, you won't have to worry about water moving from one place to the other. We changed the elevation based on a flood map plan. And it was Lee Feldman and his administration and the commission back then, they approved it. It was supposed to give us cheaper insurance for cities. But we started building all these McMansions and La Solas and you talk about Core Ridge, I'm just using these two neighborhoods. And these existing homes now are at the bottom of these new elevations and that water's pouring off those properties onto those streets that never flooded before like this. And we, we have created this problem. If you ask me, based on what I've studied, based on what I know from construction. But we have to figure out how do we go back and correct this, especially in existing neighborhoods. If you're building a whole new development with no existing properties, it's okay because you're going to be able to control the water on that property. But you can't control a McMansion next door to my 50-year-old home and say that by putting a three-foot square on each side of my property, I'm going to keep that water on my property. And when you look at La Solas House, look at the driveways. I don't know how someone over the age of 50 can even walk up some of those driveways. But we set those elevations based on the flood plane. So it's a lot involved. And if you're not paying attention and you got policymakers up there. Everyone's not a contractor and can get some of the answers like me. But they want some of the similar things that I want, but there's some things that I don't want to, to, to change or want to change that would help this development problem we got with flooding. I mean, the other thing we have now is this order that we have where we we keep talking about bringing all these units online and what it's going to do to our sewer systems, but we, not we, the last commission put orders in place that the contractors or the developers now have to put in the lateral lines to our sewers. And now if the lateral is broken, you got to go all the way to the middle of the street as the contractor or the private person and tap into our system. So you got to go now and start toying with our infrastructure. I would never let the private sector touch our infrastructure. But we got orders on the books right now and I brought it up. This is my third time bringing it up and we keep looking at it as a revenue stream. It's not going to be a revenue stream when they destroy this new infrastructure we're putting in by letting the private, who's going to check that person? Right now we have a city project manager and inspector sitting there when they, we make the improvements. I will fix it, call for an inspection. He sees everything perfectly from the eyes standpoint. But what happens when I cover it up? What happens 10 years from now? But I don't think we should be allowing private sector to touch the gravity mains. I think we should do what we did in the past, which is we provide a lateral and the homeowner or the commercial piece of property hooks up to the city's lateral. We're doing it in the opposite now and we're going to have a big infrastructure problem here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Check it out.
Commissioner, is what you're describing there, is that going on all over the city of Fort Lauderdale or just in certain areas?
Yes, it is. City of Fort Lauderdale. I talk about it, but I'm drowned out with this commission. So as I'm turning out and leaving just a little bit early because of what happened with the L.C. Health Hastings death, this issue will still be there and I'll address it from a county perspective. I don't think the county is doing that. I don't think the county allows the private sector to touch their infrastructure.
Okay.
So it's the sewer laterals that go up to the gravity mains. So typically, if you built a house right now, either one of you, it's our responsibility to give you a lateral to hook up your sewer. The latter has to be on the, on the, on the, on the ownership side of the private sector sidewalk. They're allowing us now to dig all the way to the middle, to the crown of the road, work on that pipe and create our own laterals for any new development. It is dangerous. The only people I probably would trust is a commercial project, never residential.
Okay.
But it's a revenue stream for us and we're taking that to balance the budget. Sometimes you have to look at, you know, bringing on new residents can bring us and new taxes can bring us a revenue stream that we are jeopardizing our infrastructure.
And you're telling us that, you're telling us that this policy change to allow this, this happened during, when Lee Feldman was around, right?
Yeah, I think it happened then. And you can, I don't, you can double check it, but it was there when I came into office and I argued with the last commission about the same thing. And they just said, no, we can't do that. And you have to pay for this. And then probably a commission before last, I was arguing again and the mayor just went on and said, it's a revenue stream. That's why we did, I said, mayor, but you don't understand. You know, the severity of what this is going to do to the integrity of our infrastructure years to come.
I wanted to shift gears for a moment and ask you about a totally different subject. And just have you briefly walk me through what the issues were here. There's, in the community, it's a great source of pride. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's the expansion and reopening of the LA Lee branch to the YMCA. And yet I keep hearing, you know, from people I know in the political community, you know, that some people in the community were opposed to what was done there. And I wanted to just get your perspective on what was the controversy about it, if there was one, with the redirection of the YMCA branch in Fort Lauderdale?
I came on in 2014, around about 15, they started talking about putting a YMCA in the community. We started looking for places to put it. We had a Bondi Mizell Center, old library that had reaches shelf life and because all the books went down to the African Research Library when they opened that, that space up in, I think in 80, 81. That became a community center, a hub for economic development. I think CRA was in there. I think you had the American Heart Association in there. You had. I think I said Parks and Rec, you had the N W A C P office in there and some other community pieces in that, in that building. Bobby DeBose came in and. Kept those folks in that building. The building started to deteriorate and the city wanted to, to repurpose it and to Bobby's credit. He allocated some $900,000 to, 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 to improve that building. But we later found out that you could not take CRA dollars and allocate it to a city. Building. So, but, but they built the N W A C P Welcome Center, just right across the street, probably two buildings down. Relocated them, relocated all the people that were in that building. So the building just sat there locked up and it, and it became a sick building. We had several proposals for minority builder, Brian Johnson for the minority builders wanted it. He came in, could not justify the finances, so he got an attitude about it. So we were looking for a spot for the YMCA. I said, why not put it here? It's a public piece of land. This is a, it's, this would be a CRA project. If we bring it a nonprofit, we could, we could then improve it with CRA dollars. And that's how we started this process. We had a cross section of the people in the community in the room. And you had Marsha Ellison was in the room. You had Sonia Burrows and Burrows Alexa was in the room. We invited Bobby Henry from the West Side Gazette. We invited everyone to the table. Marsha, to her credit, did come. I did not add anything to. Building. It was only to, to take away from this momentum we had in the room. Born in that room. And from there.
You have no, no, nothing.
We had. Bobby Henry, Bobby DeBose, Marsha Ellison, Sonia Burrows and a few others. They were very loud and they went out to start getting petitions signed against the YMCA. Bobby DeBose signed one of the first petitions. Bobby DeBose called the president of YMCA South Florida, Cheryl Woods. Was threatening her. He called Judy Stern and said that this project should not, should not move forward. Bobby Henry threatened to take all of his. Support from the YMCA if Cheryl moved forward with this. And it became a hot issue with a small group of people. The Civil Sneakers and the Trail Blazers, which is a senior citizen group who had been using this YMCA to work out daily. Not me, not Bobby Henry, not anyone who used to go there. Was in that building working out. These were seniors who once danced there when it was first built, who once. Their childhood memories were in that LA Lee YMCA. And they wanted a pool and I started out by saying, I will give you a pool, but we can't do it here. Let's, let's build a new building. Let's give you a pool and everything in it. The fight started and it hasn't stopped. We have one of the, I think, one of the most. Beautiful YMCA's that I've ever seen. And every time I take a trip, I try to visit the local YMCA's. We are by far the, the one that everyone else needs to model after. And if you all haven't been in there, go in that YMCA and ask yourselves the question. Why would anyone not want this? And in particular, in a neighborhood that has been deprived of so much for so long. But they made it an issue. And they have not let go of this. And there was two buildings. The N W A C P Welcome Center and the Negro Chamber that Sonia Burrows runs right now. That had a public purpose in them. Which is 100 square feet and the Negro Chamber is supposed to be for the public. From nine to five. And the Welcome Center is supposed to be open to the public from nine to five. Go there any day and see if you can enter into one of those buildings. So I did not want the same model. For a public project. I wanted another entity to run the building. So now the YMCA is open from six o'clock in the morning when I go in there. To nine o'clock at night and anyone can go in if you have the right credentials, which is a YMCA card. Or when we get the front finished with the economic pieces of the stores and the restaurants. I mean, it's just, it's a game changer. It's a game changer.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. I don't want to occupy too much more time. And I do want to ask you though to. Both for our sake and for the sake of the voters of, of the district will be voting. And I'm not asking you to criticize him, but you, you, you know Bobby Dubois very well and a lot of voters do. City Commissioner, State Legislator. Draw, draw us a contrast between yourself, Commissioner McKenzie and Bobby Dubois.
When Bobby DeBose endorsed me and asked me to take his position at City of Fort Lauderdale, I did it with hesitancy, but I did it with, once I commit to something, I give it my all. I came in, I did the homework. I saw that this community had not gone any. Further than what Carlton Moore left it. And I think you should judge not just me, not just Bobby, every politician by his or her. Works. And commitment to community. You see my resume? You've heard it. We've talked about it today. I can't tell you what Bobby. Has done, but I can tell you what he didn't do in this district. And I could tell you about his report card up in Tallahassee. I mean, it's public information. I mean, if you have them, if your job is to get bills passed, I mean, how many bills did you pass? How effective were you? I mean, it's not just being the Democratic leader. It's not just having a title. It's about rolling up your sleeve and bringing home the bacon to the folks in Fort Lauderdale. Who sent you there to bring home some dollars for our parks, our, our infrastructure or, or changing laws that'll help us. Bridge gaps between public safety and, and policing. And I mean, and, and people always talk about, you know, Black Lives Matter and these things. And when all this stuff was going on with the George Floyd situation. But no one ever really looked into what I talked about openly and had a little debate or dispute with my own police department, which is. The Police Bill of Rights. And this is why police officers get their jobs back when they. Shoot someone and the public thinks that it was unjust. But they have a whole set of laws that govern them. So if we really want to impact change, it's got to start. In Tallahassee. I never had a desire to go to Tallahassee, but he was there. He was there then, did nothing. And when he was in the city of Fort Lauderdale, he's a nice person. Don't get me wrong. He once was a part of a. We thought the friendship here in Fort Lauderdale, but once he went to Tallahassee, he became a different person. He deserted his community and the times that he did come back, it was to go against the YMCA. Or when we were talking about renaming the state park at the Bondi Mizell and Ula Johnson. It got very heated and personal there because they didn't want the Mizell family's name on the park. But Bondi Mizell is the person that got the beach for us to go to back in the day. He's the one that got the, the county, fought for the county. Ula Johnson was his, was his back then secretary or aide, as I would say today. So that's the role she played, but I'm sure they both played off each other. But everything with this group, and I'll say Bobby, Bobby Henry of the West Side Gazette, Marsha Ellison of the N W A C P. It's, it's, it's personal and it's divisive to our community. I'm very inclusive. And if it's good for the community, it's good for me. I just think we don't want to go backwards. They're now saying that we, we party too much over here in our district. This is what Bobby's saying as part of his political platform. But we had to get people to come back here and take a look at this neighborhood because most of you just drive through it. You never turn down the side streets to see what's there. So in order to do that, you promote it. You promote it. You promote the affordable housing that we've done. You promote the townhouses we did up about near Benes. You promote the diversity. Smitty's Wings, they didn't want Smitty's Wings. I mean, it is successful. Even Dean Trent Talis, the mayor Trent Talis, said it would fail in 90 days. Now we're getting cold complaints that it's too loud and too many people. I mean, that's what we want. We want the same thing that other. Parts of the city enjoy so much and make Fort Lauderdale this vibrant place that we have. But for some reason, they have become so anti-development or anti. We don't want it over here in our neighborhoods. And he promised the people that he's going to give them their community back. I thought the community is getting, I thought they're getting everything they need under my leadership. And it's sad that I'm leaving, but I'm, I think it's time for me to go across the street. And help Broward County do some of the same things that I did when I highlighted or. Brought to the attention of the commissioners that this community needs the same type of attention and services that everybody else is entitled to.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for walking us through that. Dan Sweeney, anything additional?
Uh, no, nothing from me.
Okay. Now. Has someone else joined us?
I think Mrs. Siccard, I heard, I think I heard that voice.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I wanted to unmute. I was getting some extraneous noise, so I'm trying to unmute her microphone. I can't do it. There it is. Mrs. Siccard, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
Thank you for joining us. I'm sorry you joined us a little bit late and we are short on time. But I would, I would happily give you a couple of minutes to make a statement as to why you think you're the best person in this county commission race.
Thank you so very much. I apologize for my project. I'm at, at the library currently focusing on my ways and totally for this that. Yes, I am running for Broward County Commission District Eight because I have throughout the years, for the past 30 years. I have been a 20s more as an activist and an advocate for issues of interest to the community. I've been asked by union organizations to speak on their behalf at county commissions. I have been advocating for living wages, voting rights, access to healthcare, immigration issues, of course. I have worked for Jackson Health System for the past 32 years. I'm retired from there. I have time to spend and make sure that issues of interest to the District Eight are taken care of. I am. I would say more like an activist than an politician. What I do is make things happen for my community and I have been very efficient in doing this. I'm not a bully, but I can be forceful and defend a position that I have. When it comes to the benefits of this community. I believe that I am the best candidate because not only have the time to do it, I'm not a politician, but I am an activist. And I make things happen. This, this is what I do, ensuring that. Issues are taken care of. I have walked the, the district. There are places in Fort Lauderdale specifically where people are complaining. They have sidewalks that have been up wooded for the past year and six. I have heard a conflict for many things that former representatives of that area have not taken care of. And being this new kid on the block and having the energy that I have. I have participated with the census, census of 2010 and 2023. As a Commissar Committee member, I understand the area, understand the, the issues that are plaguing. District Eight, for example, that. The morgue, it's not a morgue, but it's probably that. We could have alternative locations for it. It does not need to be within the African-American community that has in the past historically always been. The, the receiving the shock with happiness and worries of. It is disrupting and destroying their businesses and the value of the property. There are a few other things that I can name, but for the sake of time, if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to, to, to respond to them.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks so much, Mrs. Siccard. I do want to ask Commissioner Robert McKenzie about something that Mrs. Siccard just mentioned. If I heard Mrs. Siccard correctly, she said there should not be a morgue in the black community. This project, as you know, we're talking about the proposal to relocate the Broward County Medical Examiner's Office. To an area on the very far west side of Fort Lauderdale known as the Golden Heights Community. It was, it was rejected by the Broward County Commission a few months ago.
Yeah, if you, if you remember, I was at that commission meeting and.
Yes, I do.
And I asked my friends on that commission to please reconsider. I even called out the current county commissioner at the time. Dale Holders, who in my opinion is the one that failed us. And it's not a morgue. I think when we give people bad information. Or scary information. I never used the word morgue until I quoted someone, but. Talk about what it was. It's the Medical Examiner's Office with the crime lab for the sheriff's office. But the community didn't want it. They didn't listen. And I had been warning them for years prior to when they first purchased it and had the idea. Not to do it. And people weren't listening. They listened to Dale Holders. And Dale Holders cut a deal. It wasn't until about, I'm serious, a couple of months before his election. He was over in Lauderdale Manners and they, the community got so heated. That he said that a commissioner in Fort Lauderdale got paid, you know, by the lobbyists to, you know, to bring this morgue. I had no authority over the morgue and we never intended on putting a substation there either. All these were false statements that he used to, to do whatever it was he didn't do. But all I ever did was tell, tell the truth. I do not want that facility. And if I am elected by the people, that'll be one of my first priorities is to help the commissioners. Finish the last piece of what they said, which was. They instructed staff to go out and find another location in a commercial industrial area to facilitate this process. So right now, the last report that I got 35 days ago from Monica was that they have not found a. A, a piece yet. And I think it was Commissioner Brogan that said that. He didn't want to take it off of the drawing board. He wanted to put it on hold because it would, would deescalate. Or dismiss the value of what they could sell it for. But I think we could do a lot there and in particular, something similar to what I did next door with the, with the Housing Authority. We can build some affordable housing units. I, I much not. Rather have. Apartments. I'd rather have homeownership. That'd be a great little community that we can do. And I mean, if the county paid $3 billion for, what is $3 billion in $4 billion? When you're going to take the fear out of the neighborhood of the Medical Examiner or quote unquote, the morgue. And build something that would sustain the schools, just two schools next to you, one adult school, one elementary school. And we have a housing authority. We have a beautiful community back there that you refer to as Golden Heights and Lake Eyre.
Right. Let me just ask you real quickly though. I mean, I heard what you're saying. You're right. It is a distortion. Okay, you did oppose it. Okay. Yep. Yeah, but you're right that, well, if you remember our editorial, I mean, it was, it was demagogued for political reasons.
Right.
And, and the neighborhood, the neighborhood was sort of used as a whipping boy for, to whip up emotions in the middle of a congressional campaign, right?
Yeah. And right now you got this, my other two opponents, both using this as a platform because they don't have a platform. I've been doing this from day one. I do this even when I'm not. A commissioner. I build affordable housing. I'm in this community. I'm building things. I'm doing things. I'm not sitting around waiting for things to happen to give a knee jerk reaction or some political. Soundbite. And I didn't go up there for a soundbite. I went up there for a fight. I went up there to, to stop this commission from putting this in our neighborhood. Because when I was taking it on the road to the homeowners, they were listening to, to Commissioner Dale Holders. And then Bobby DeBose, because he was running for. Congress decided to get in the fight, go hold a sign up on Sunrise 27th Avenue. I didn't hold a sign up. I called my friends at the county. I, 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 I did my own social media. And, and telling the community that I did not want it. I do not support it and I still don't support it. And I'm going to fight for it when I, if I'm elected to the county commission, because you need a voice like mine. And you got to be able to get a consensus to do this. And I don't think Commissioner Holders did that. I think he took it to the finish line thinking he had that one homeowner president that agreed. Because there were going to be some jobs in the community and the jobs, listen, the model was great. The location horrific. Okay. You could take that to a industrial park anywhere and do it anytime. It'd be good, but we don't need it in our neighborhood.
All right. We, we've been talking for almost an hour, so we're going to, we're going to pause there. Commissioner McKenzie, thank you very much for coming on with us today and the best of luck to you.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it. I wish I could have got my video working so you can see my nice, my nice suit I had on.
All right. No, it's all right. And Mrs. Siccard, I'm sorry we didn't have more time with you, but, but thank you for coming on this afternoon. Thanks, thanks to you all.
Thank you.